Thank you, everyone. So without further ado, welcome to our Board of Education meeting. This is our regular meeting. Today is November fourteenth, 2022. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, next is the superintendent's report.
No moment of silence this month, which is great.
Thank goodness, yes.
Absolutely. And welcome. Good evening, everybody. The first portion of my superintendent's report is going to be devoted to the presentation of the annual financial statement. And we have Dr. Vikaro Teich who will introduce our speaker.
Sure. I'd like to introduce Chris Angada, partner at Naraki Smith. Chris was here during August and with his team conducting the year-end audit of our financial statements for 2122. And Chris is going to make a brief presentation on our financial condition and where we stand as of June 30th, 2022.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Christopher Angada, partner in the firm Naraki Smith. First and foremost, on behalf of my entire firm, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for your continuing confidence in retaining our firm as your independent auditors. As Anne mentioned, I'm here this evening to present the results of the fiscal 2022 audit of the school district. I have some brief commentary, which I believe the Board of Education has my presentation available. Just first, to confirm the scope of our services, Naraki Smith was retained by the district to perform an audit of its financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2022, in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. As part of our audit, we also performed a single audit of the federal award programs administered by the district. We also performed an audit of the extra classroom activity funds, and that is on the cash basis of accounting. As part of our audit, we contemplated issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations on approving the accounting procedures and internal controls of the district. In terms of the conduct of the audit, or what I like to call audit readiness and responsiveness, I'd like to commend the district on a timely and accurate closing of its books and records. This year, we received excellent cooperation, as we always do, from the business office. In that regard, I would like to thank Dr. Vikaro Teich, as well as Marcy Moskowitz, for the excellent cooperation that we received throughout the course of the audit to ensure that the audit process really ran smoothly this year. We did meet with the Audit Committee of the Board of Education to discuss the financial statements in detail, and all financial reports were filed with New York State on a timely basis. The district did implement a new accounting standard with this year with respect to the leases. That was Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87, and that was successfully implemented by the district this year. In terms of the financial statements themselves, I'm happy to report to the Board of Education this evening that we did issue a cleaner and modified opinion in our audit reports. And from a financial position and activity perspective, the general fund this year, the budget was within the tax cap as propagated by New York State and operated positively. The general fund fund balance all were within reasonable and legal limits, including the New York State statutory 4% limit. There was a positive change in the general fund fund balance for this year. Capital assets of the district, net depreciation charges totaled $159 million. Bonds payable this year totaled $157.8 million with current year payments of $7.4 million. The energy performance contracts totaled $3.6 million with current year payments of $857,000. I mentioned the implementation of GASB-87. There was a right-to-use asset and a lease liability on the full accrual financial statements of the district. Those totaled approximately $1.4 million. The total other post-employment benefit obligation on the district's full accrual financial statements totaled $315.2 million this year with an overall decrease of about $98 million, and that was just due to actual assumptions, the change in discount rates. The total proportionate share of the net pension plans, that's the employer retirement system and the teacher retirement system, those totaled in an asset position this year of $102 million compared to the liability position of $15.6 million in 2021, once again due to actual assumptions. And then finally, I'm happy to report to the board this evening that we did not cite the district for any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, and we had no compliance findings or questions called. And that completes my prepared comments for this evening, but I'd be happy to address any comments or questions the board may have.
That's right, that's right.
...of pages that this represents that he was able to distill for this presentation.
Thank you. And it's, you know, and as you said, good news is good news, and so we thank you, Dr. Vikaro Teich. You know, this is a lot of work. I was interviewed, so thank you. It's always good to get this news and know that we are financially sound.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Have a good evening.
It is always fantastic when you financial.
You can say it if you want. I know, I know, I know.
When the audit report is followed by applause, Dr. Vikaro Teich, I think that's good news. Thank you. And also thank you to the finance and audit committees. Truly, it is hours and hours and hundreds of pages.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Madam President, if I do, I think we're remiss here. I don't have announcements by Board of Education members. Would you like to do that quickly and then go right into the superintendent's report?
Okay, so if we can just keep it brief because we want to shift our agenda a little for tonight, I will say that Dr. Rick and I were at the Hall of Fame in the Athletics Hall of Fame induction tonight, and it's just always great to see the community come out and celebrate our former athletes that have been inducted into the Hall of Fame. It's exciting. I'm an athlete, so I really appreciated, I appreciated the opportunity to be there even for a little while. Also, I think almost all of us were at the trunk-or-treat at the high school.
It was great.
And it was great, and the cost, all the kids, everyone was adorable. Our high school students led that. They had little stations, like with things for younger kids to do, which was really great. And the community came out, and for me, if, you know, one of the costumes that stood out was a young child that had a COVID thing.
I was gonna say. Two, wins, positive and negative.
Yes, yes. That had that, so, you know, you know, just want to say that it's just good that we were able, the high school was able to do that for the community, and then our kids came out and enjoyed it, and our students were awesome.
I'll mention a few things. Some of us were at, participated in George Washington's reading night.
Oh, yeah.
So I was really happy to read a couple of my favorite books, The Witch Next Door and Bertrude MacFuzz, all those wonderful lessons for children. White Plains High School's Theater Unlimited did their fall play Shakespeare's Much Ado About Nothing, and so that was quite enjoyable. I attended Eastview's Veterans, Veterans Day musical salute, and I have to say, I go every year, and it is moving, meaningful, the students take ownership. I was part of the middle school redesign, seems like ages ago, and that is just what we wanted to see when we made Eastview into a sixth-grade, you know, building. Those students really take ownership and pride, and it was a wonderful example of experiential learning that we do here in White Plains. It was really terrific. Parent universities are ongoing. There was one in October, oh, have I?
Don't start all over.
Okay, no, I won't. Sorry. Parent University, there was one in October, there was one in September. The October was Children's Social Emotional Development. Those recordings are available on the website, so I urge, you know, parents and guardians to go listen. And the next one is on November 21st, Mental Health and Wellness. We had a community budget forum that a number of us also attended, and as the public knows, but I will repeat it, we are always open to suggestions having to do with the budget. So it didn't have to just happen at the forum. And finally, I attended an advocacy meeting with Westchester Putnam School Boards Association.
And we have more good news from our swim.
I got that.
Okay, so I'll talk about it. I'll talk about it briefly. I think it was four, because your daughter qualified for state, five qualified for the state meet in two events.
Swimming.
Swimming, in the Hundred Fly and the, oh, wait.
So Grace.
Grace, Saus, Saus. Yeah. Yeah, so we have five, you know, young women going to the states. Grace was in two, is in two events, and we have a relay going, and the 50 free and the hundred free, and Grace is the Hundred Fly. I would say this has been a successful swim season for our team.
Yeah, I was gonna ask where it is, Rochester.
Yeah, where is it? Where is that state, Rochester? Look, it doesn't matter. It could be a blizzard. It could be a blizzard in Rochester. When they get there, they're gonna be happy to be there and compete. It's a milestone. It's a milestone to make the state team, so congratulations.
Yeah, they did great.
Yeah, congratulations to you, congratulations to the team, congratulations to the coaching staff. And so I think that that ends our board comments for now.
Great. It is American Education Week, and we're very excited to be back and be welcoming parents and guardians, visiting our buildings, and certainly celebrating all of the fantastic things associated with public education. And we have our student liaison update this evening. Sinclair's here with us. Is Delia here too? I didn't see.
There you are.
Come on up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sinclair Harris.
And I'm Delia Rojas.
Yeah, and we're just here to share some good news from schools and departments across the district. So first, starting with Post Road School, the Girls on the Run Team had a practice 5K, and they appreciated Dr. Ricka, Dr. Anne Vikaro Teich, Mrs. Argerton, Mr. Pepper for being a part of their cheer squad as the girls ran 3.1 miles around Post Road School. And their teachers have continued using community circles with students each day. And also at Post Road, fifth grade, fifth grade students are practicing for their Broadway dance performance, and they're doing dances from A Chorus Line, Will Rogers' Follies, Cats, Hamilton, and Steam Heat. Third and fourth grade teachers are incorporating their new Science 21 curriculum in their classrooms. And at Post Road, for Hispanic Heritage Month, the Arthur Murray Dance Studio showcased a dance assembly for the entire school. And kindergarteners and first graders participated in a We Future Cycle recycling program. And lastly, the Post Road community is looking forward to their reading carnival, which is coming up this week. And then some news from Ridgeway School. They're pleased to report that Ridgeway is currently working with their incredible PTA to plan a Turkey Trot, and the event will be on Monday, November 21st, on the field, and the goal is to fundraise for Ridgeway School events. And they've already raised over $10,000 in six days. And fifth graders at Ridgeway will create a student council for opportunities for students to have more of a voice at Ridgeway. And then at Merrick Avenue School, MAS decided to kick off American Education Week and is looking forward to welcoming parents, guardians into their classrooms. And furthermore, they've unveiled, they've unveiled their newly redesigned school sign and decorated it in their school colors, and donated, this sign was donated by the MAS graduating class of 2022. And students at MAS had a great day learning and sharing on November 8th, in which staff presented workshops in literacy, ENL strategies, mindfulness, and the power of relationships. They also spent time this month discussing ways to enhance student reasoning skills through explicit strategies and modeling. MAS also had a very fun and spooky Halloween, featuring costumes from the Seven Dwarves to superheroes, and a read aloud of some fantastic Halloween-themed books. They also had an exciting Halloween parade and a spooktacular to end the day. And lastly, at MAS, their school-based equity team and music teachers planned and organized a school-wide concert in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, featuring performances by each grade of a musical selection of traditional songs from various countries. At Church Street Elementary School, they had a Monster Mash at the Halloween Parade and at the trunk-or-treat. And thank you to the, they would like to thank the WPTA, who provided books and treats for the CSS families to take home. And Church Street would also like to thank everyone who came out to support their farmer's market. They raised a little over $300, and all proceeds will be donated to a local charity. And this month, Church Street School started Bus Circles, in which students on the bus come together with the teaching assistant, the bus driver, Ms. Castillo and Mrs. Lee to build a bus community and talk about ways that each person can do their part to ensure that others are in the yellow and green zones when riding the school bus. They would like to thank Sergio and the bus company for allowing the bus drivers to join in the bus. And this month, Church Street is honoring Native American Heritage Month. Their librarian, Mr. Talbot, put together a bookshelf for students and families to enjoy reading and sharing their new learning, or recommending a book to friends after reading. And then last but not least, we have George Washington, and they held their first in-person family reading night on October 18th, and it was a wonderful way to welcome their families and George Washington patriots to share this evening of great literature and to promote a love of reading. They would also like to thank the board members and cabinet members who were able to serve as guests for the night. They also held a Character Day on October 28th, where students and staff dressed up as their favorite literary character, and it was fun for them to see so many books come to life in their classrooms and hallways. From Dr. Seuss to Harry Potter and many classics, and also newly released titles, they're well represented across the campus. And this was a great way to promote reading and introduce their patriots to new titles and genres to consider. Thank you. Now, pass it over to Delia.
So always talking about the middle schools and the high schools, unfortunately, we weren't able to get some news from Eastview, but we hope to hear from them next month. With Highlands, they held their annual Walkathon, which honored the beloved teacher, mentor, and coach Fred Gressler, as well as students have begun to join a lot of clubs throughout the school. More specifically, we heard some news from the School Trip Club, where they started their mass projects this week. And then on to the White Plains High School. Almost 200 White Plains High School juniors were invited to join NHS, so we're very excited for them. Singer-Songwriters was held November 11th, where our singers were able to demonstrate their skills and really just bring a community together in Elmport. White Plains High School held an amazing trunk-or-treat. Different students, staff, all came together to really have a wonderful Halloween for our youngsters. The second Tiger Community was a success this month, and we're awaiting our next Tiger Community Day, where a bunch of clubs come together to really demonstrate how students can unite as a community. And the musical this year, Mamma Mia, has begun their tryout. They will be holding this musical February 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And we wanted to talk about the kind of memorial for the class of 2020, demonstrating their resilience to having gone through the pandemic and graduating basically through a car walk in a way. We wanted to really demonstrate our gratitude towards them and show their resilience. In the athletics department, Kara Ha, Taryn, I apologize if I got this wrong, Vikara, Grace, Hirake, and Sasiska Akman have become state qualifiers in the 200 free relay for the White Plains High School swim team. Joey DiMillo was the top finisher in the boys varsity race. Sasiska Akman broke the school 50 free record, placing her as number one in the division. And the boys varsity soccer team won the league championship, officially making them league champions. And finally, Rochambeau held their Spirit Week in October, but a highlight was their Pink Day, where they were able to show their support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Each month, students and staff participate in a new community service motivate called Rochambeau Cares. And in the month of October, students and staffs came together to make lollipops and hand them out to the pre-K students in below the building. And as well as in the month of October, students had the opportunity to be recognized for their math achievements, and Dr. Bratcher and the math department recognized this by allowing them a lunch on. And yeah, that's all for this month.
Say it every month, you two Tigers do a fantastic job of recapping. Thank you so much. I do also want to add, and again, just a lot of, a lot of great news to celebrate. We also had a state finisher in Sophie Ginsburg, who participated in cross-country over the weekend. She came in the top 30.
Twenty-three, I think.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
And I think it was, I think she was under 20 minutes in her, in her race. So they're really, really just outstanding in addition to, of course, our, our state qualifiers who are going to be competing this week, right, Jim? Thursday? Friday? Yeah. You know, good luck to them, and, and congratulations to all of our fall athle-, by the way, winter sports started today.
Today.
So really just right from one right into the next. Again, thank you ladies so much. I also want to, to echo President Eller's congratulations to this year's class for White Plains High School Athletics Hall of Fame. A great class, and they're celebrating them over at the high school right now. We will be celebrating our student athletes as we do in December with our, our celebration at the high school for Scholar-Athlete. I do want the board to also recognize that the principals and the coordinators and directors throughout the district have been working diligently on their goals and objectives this year with a very strong focus, as always, on student achievement, but also intertwining the work that we've been doing through, in conjunction with our strategic plan and social emotional learning, as well as equity. So great work happening at the building level, and we'll be happy to continue to give you updates on that. And this evening, we, we have, Post Road is in the house, and they're gonna be giving us an update. I do want to, before I turn it over to Post Road, I do also want to thank again the Finance and Audit Committee for all of their hard work, as well as the Master Planning Committee and the building-level committees that are working diligently to have our plans in place for our capital projects. A lot of work happening all the time, and, and great to see us moving forward. The long-range and budget planning community input session was, was well done, and again, as Cheryl noted, budget@wpcsd.us, and you could send all of your, your ideas for budget along. And I do want to just take a moment to, as, as we're moving into the holiday season, it's hard to believe, but as we're thinking about the holidays with, with Thanksgiving right next week, just to, to say thank you, not just to the Board of Education, but also to the entire educational community. A lot of amazing things happening in the White Plains City School District, but it happens because of the collaboration in and among everybody in our community. So whether it be something as what seems simple today, like opening schools for all children, we all know how complex those types of situations can be, and, you know, White Plains has worked extraordinarily well, and we are fully backed, and it is a beautiful thing. But, you know, I just want to thank everybody for all that hard work and their determination to always put our kids first. I mean, it is easy to see in some instances where conversations, you know, whether it be at the district level or Board of Education level, are focused on adult problems or on adult desires. Here in White Plains, we're focused on kids, and that, that really is absolutely fantastic, and it's going to be further evidenced. Principal Sorio is here this evening, and she is going to be giving us an update on Post Road. And welcome, Jesse, and Rob, and everybody else from Post Road.
So good evening, Dr. Ricka. Good evening, President Eller, members of the board, cabinet members, my distinguished colleagues and colleagues. So excited to be here this evening. Wanted to say hello to all of our guests. I see we have a big Ridgeway contingent. Not gonna forget them, but we also have a nice contingent here from Post Road, so we're gonna do a little bit of a welcome. And I just want to echo something that Dr. Ricka just shared, and that, you know, we do have a spirit of collaboration here. And I think, as I shared tonight, very proudly as the principal of Post Road, that we are celebrating our in-person start. And yes, we were in person last year, but we are so excited to welcome our families back into our school. And so I'm just really proud and just want to share some of the things that we are, we have been able to do this year that were traditions, that we had to let go for a couple of years, and, and we're just sort of excited. And I'm pretty sure that as I'm sharing tonight, other colleagues from across the district are gonna share, like, yes, we do that too, because all five schools are more similar than we are different. And so how exciting that our kindergarten families could actually walk into the building this year. They could take that special moment photo, that our PTA was able to host a new parent coffee and welcome all of our new families inside of the school and to establish that community. That we were able to have our welcome back picnic, although we had it last year, you could see just the smile on the faces of our family and of our staff and their family, just a huge turnout, because we're just so happy to be back and connected again. That we were able to have our open house in person, parents could come into the school, and really were feeling for those families who, who had never even been in the building, I think up to second grade. Just so excited to be able to come in. They couldn't wait to hear my curriculum overview, but they were more excited to visit their child's classroom, to actually sit in their child's seat and just see the layout of the room. All of that was unveiled to them, and, and they had such a positive experience, and that just makes us feel so good. We reinstituted our chess program this year. We're so excited that we have approximately 90 students who are participating, and that program can't exist without our parent volunteers, and now they're back inside of our school. Something else that, that's, that's exciting is that our children are back going on. They're going! They're going on field trips! So, and now it's, it's that. That's Ms. McMath over here taking her second graders to the firehouse, so now the children can actually go into the firehouse and get onto the vehicles and get those demonstrations that they really couldn't have before. And, you know, we love, we love all of that. As was mentioned, we did have our Hispanic Heritage Month, our, we're back having assembly programs again, and we were so excited that we could invite the Arthur Murray Dance Studio to come on in and display some dancing for our students, which they thoroughly enjoyed. I also want to share that we, if you remember the Beyond Ballroom Dance Program, well, it's back! Thank you to the friends of the White Plains Public Schools. It's not ballroom dance, but we do have Broadway dance, and we are the first school this year to have our dance presentation, which is actually, the, the children will be performing for their parents on Thursday night, so you can just see, just a little, a little snippet, very cute. They're very, very excited. Yeah, and so I think Ridgeway's next, actually. I think they're, I think they're next, so we're very excited. And as was mentioned, today's the start of American Education Week, and, and what's different is our parents, again, they're inside of the classrooms, just here, side by side with their children, learning, engaging in an activity, look at their smiles. It's just, it's really, it's really just wonderful. We were also able, we are offering a number of parent workshops this week. Today, we offered math games, so you can just see some of our, our parents here and our math specialists just doing a fine job welcoming our families and including them. and our math specialists just doing a fine job welcoming our families and including them and, and the instructional process. I want to share about the power of circles. And so if you don't know a whole lot about it, it's really, a community circle is a safe space where the participants can engage in discussion. And this year, I think at all the elementary schools and schools across the district are really engaging in this process. I was able to have an opportunity last year, along with my administrator colleagues, to experience the power of a circle. And so when the opportunity presented itself for us as a school and schools to become facilitators of circles, I certainly jumped at the opportunity. Mr. Spatafino joined me, but I went around to, to, to my staff and was like, hey, let's, let's do this together. And I'm really proud that approximately twenty of us are trained in circles and we've been implementing them. So, you know, it is different than a morning meeting. I may be preaching to the choir because I know several people in this room are trained in, in both schools. But basically, when a community circle is, is very intentional. You decide together what the topic is going to be. You open that in a, you open the circle in a very ritualistic manner. It can start with a poem. It can start with a quote, maybe a piece of music. What's instrumental is the use of a talking piece. And that talking piece really allows all of the participants to be careful listeners because you're only speaking when you hold that piece. You know, you begin by checking in with people's feelings and then you pre-plan very intentional questions that are intended to get the participants to share perspectives. Oh boy, bear with me here, guys. To share perspectives and to share their stories. And, and why is that important? Because when we learn each other's stories, that's how we build community. And as we know, community is fundamental to everything that we do in education. And you close that circle at the end. You close it with some sort of commitment to safeguarding those stories. You know, there could be a mindfulness moment. There could be sharing of perhaps a quote. And I just want to share with you, I'm actually going to skip this video because I don't want it to take too long. I know there's so much that we want to get done tonight. But I just want to share with you why circles are important in terms of our work around equity. And that is, when you are engaged in a circle, everyone has a chance to be heard. We are all equal participants. There is no hierarchy. Just because I'm the principal and I'm running the circle doesn't mean that what I have to say is more important than a student or the superintendent or a teacher, a parent, or what have you. It really gives us a chance to make deeper connections with each other. Sometimes to make connections with people that maybe we thought we had nothing in common with. But by listening to the stories, we're able to build connection and have relationship. It's a chance for us to engage in, in honest dialogue. So if you could imagine, this year, we are dedicating ourselves to focusing on building community. Circles can also be used to repair harm. So when something may go wrong in, in, in a classroom or even amongst staff members, we could actually sit and use the ritual of a circle to have honest dialogue, to hold each other accountable because we have a set of agreements. It gives us a chance to problem solve together, teaching children how to problem solve. But I think the most important thing I take away is the way we develop empathy for each other. And, and that's a way to begin resolving conflict. So our implementation is still at the very early stages. But what I want to share with you is that after, after having that training at our first superintendent's conference day, it wasn't just Mr. Spatafino and myself who were facilitating circles. It was all of the facilitators breaking us down into smaller circles and giving, and they took risks. And as you can see here, look at the smiles on their faces. People looking at each other very intently, really sharing very thoughtfully, very happily. And, and to me, this was setting the tone for how we were going to start our school year. You know, that mission of having strong community. Now I want you to just see some circles in action in our schools. So you can see here in some kindergarten classes, you know, we do it in a developmentally appropriate way. Very sweet. It could just be doing a check-in and how are you feeling today? If you could give your feeling in terms of a color, what would it be? I'm feeling yellow like the sun. It's very, very sweet. You know, when we're talking about our fifth graders, here's an example of older children. You know, understand that what our, what our facilitators, our teachers are doing is teaching our children to come to the table with, what are the values they're bringing? What can they offer in their school community, but also being able to articulate what they need in return? So as you can see here, these are just some examples. Well, I bring bravery, but I need self-control, right? We all do. You know, I bring optimism. Well, that's, you know, bringing positivity to any community is important and needing that enthusiasm, perhaps to be, you know, a great learner. You know, here, you know, we celebrated Unity Day across the district. And here's an example of a third grade teacher using very intentional questions to, to foster the, the concepts of acceptance and kindness in our community. And having children think very thoughtfully about a time they helped someone. And then in the second round of questions, thinking about a time where they needed help. And how important that is for them to each share that, share that with each other. And very proudly, you could see they did their Unity Day activity afterwards. So these are just some examples of how circles are being used in our school. You can see the children, when they go to specials, they're experiencing a circle. And I want to just have just a little bit, I'm almost done. I'm going pretty fast, right? I wanted to share from a teacher's perspective how she feels it's going.
So I took the circle class over the summer and we have been doing circles in my kindergarten classroom at least, at least two, sometimes three times a week in place of our regular meeting. The children really do seem to like it because they like holding the special item, which we, you know, we decide what it's going to be. Usually it's a stuffed animal that they really want to hold. You know, one of them, their favorite is the one that's our stuffed animal family and they love passing it around and then sharing their ideas. It's great because usually the ideas come, that I pick come from like a poem that we did or a book that we read, a lot of social emotional development, what they can do. The one that we did today was, we did a poem about what things we can do. We read the book, The Little Engine That Could. And then they talked about things that they can do and about things that they want to be able to do by themselves.
And so right, you know, using the, the power of a circle to help children achieve, you know, growth mindset. And listening to this young lady, I hope.
We can all listen to each other and so that we don't be, we don't get interrupted.
Okay. And why do you like circles? What do you like so much about it?
Because we can listen to each other's answers and sometimes the answers can be funny and we'll get a lot.
Okay. And are you interested in creating your own circle for your classmates? So just hearing from, also from a child's perspective, they really hone in on the fact that they have their individual moment to share. That talking piece is so important and instrumental. And finally, in closing, I just want to share with you, I want you to just see how the story is going. How we started as staff members, building our community, then teachers, building community within their classrooms, but we can't forget our families. And, you know, something that I want to share with you is that we're really looking for even greater participation from all of our parents. And, you know, sometimes we find that our Hispanic families are not as participatory. And so as a principal, I would be remiss if I wasn't continuing to find out why is that happening? And I actually, in conjunction with the PTA presidents, one of them who was here tonight, Ms. Malave, thank you for being here, decided to hold a meeting only in Spanish. So that, you know, to try and discover and understand like, what are some of the challenges and what are some of the barriers you might be facing? And as you see here, I, I actually decided at the last moment, you know what, I'm going to do a circle. And I actually conducted this particular meeting completely in Spanish, which is not my first language, but I prepared and I studied and the parents truly appreciated it. I don't think you can hear this, so I'm not going to display here this testimony, but it was just lovely to hear Ms. Malave share how, how equal she felt in the circle and how she was able to just share very freely, so with the other parents, without any kind of judgment. And just feeling a lot of acceptance. You can see the smiles on their faces. It was a small group, but I can tell you that they committed, next time, we're going to be double when we have our meeting. And, and sometimes it starts very grassroots and I know it's going to grow. And this is the beginning of our journey this year. After we had this meeting, there was great participation. And I don't mean by attending the event, although you can see here, this is our Post Road Fiesta, our culminating celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month. It is the parents who are here volunteering their time, bringing things from their culture to just make such a special evening, helping to coordinate entertainment, food, and very proudly serving, not just for this event, but also we recognize something that we heard very clearly is that when our families come to our school, if they cannot hear whatever the messages that you were offering in their language, they may not come back. And so we cannot lose those opportunities. And so here's a literacy workshop, which was well-attended and we were able to see greater participation. This is a bilingual literacy workshop of our Hispanic families. We're very, very proud of that. And last thing I want to share is just a point of pride. And it's just wonderful that it's, that we're actually here tonight. Is that with the support of George Washington School, we have had a food pantry for a couple of years. But hopefully tonight, we will be board approved to be our own standalone food pantry in partnership with Feeding Westchester. So I want to thank the business office for all of their support. I also want to thank publicly Principal Munjen, who has supported this endeavor to make our school more of a community school. And what you're looking at here, our parents who've been empowered to have a space within our school and they own this space. They run this space. And it's not called a food pantry. It's called the Post Road Market. It's a point of pride. It is a bright spot. El Mercadito is open to anyone in the community. And this is just a way that, just one step in our parents taking a greater role in the school. I want to thank Ms. Malave before we close out for just joining our school this year. This is a kindergarten parent, everyone, new. Co-president and has already applied to the New York State PTA so that we could be a school of excellence. And we are engaged in the process right now to increase our family engagement. I want to thank everyone for all of your time this evening. And I'm pretty sure you saw, I know my, my colleagues, that a lot of these things you're also doing in your schools and that's because we are a close community and we are constantly collaborating to make this district pretty amazing. Thank you for your time.
My face hurts from smiling. It's, you know, Jesse, thank you. And thank you to everybody, the entire team, the entire community, all of the parents. We have you for like, what, thirteen or fifteen years now? This is what it's about. And, and this is White Plains, right? What can we do to help our children? What can we do to elevate our community? What can we do to support each other? Circles seem simple. Knights of the Round Table. Circle up, right? All these things seem simple, but they're not. And, and they're so important. And it is so important to feed community and grow community and support community. Yeah, we're not going to agree on everything. And that's okay. Because that's what makes us vibrant and full of life. And you just did a great job tonight demonstrating that. Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody from Post Road for coming. And I think, yeah, I'm so sorry. I think you were, you wanted to, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, thank you again. And I just have to underscore, give ten seconds. You know, food pantries are so, so, so important in one of, in my organization in working with kids. We are looking for, for them, high schoolers, to volunteer in, in, in food pantries. That's the amount of importance we put on that because we take for granted what we eat, what we buy, because we can do that. And there are so many of us that cannot. And we're not always aware until there's an opportunity like this and we see how people need it. So thank you, thank you, thank you again. Next, I want to make a change to the agenda for item nine C. Can we move it up?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's, let's think about what item nine C is. And before I forget, it's, it's also good to see you, Ms. McGuire. Again, we know how much you love kids and just having you step in, it's, it's really been a treat for us. So we thank you. So next, we're moving up item nine C and that is an individual action item. And that individual action item is the recommended approval of the probationary appointment of Dr. Kimberly Crawford. The current assignment is at Ridgway School.
So.
Second.
Do we have any questions or do you want to send anything?
I have lots.
We all do.
I am, I'm really pleased certainly to bring this recommendation forward to the Board of Education. But, but in truth, you know, Dr. Crawford's been part of our community for years and she has devoted her time and her talent and her love to our children. And to see her now ascending to the position of principal at Ridgway Elementary School, pending the vote.
You can be a betting man.
You can be a betting man. It's really, it's really fantastic. And Kimberly, I, I'll tell you, it's a, it's a real pleasure to work with you and alongside you. And I'm, I know Dr. Hand and I, we had our first, you're first, even though tonight's the official approval. We had our first Goals and Objectives meeting together today. And it was great to talk to you about the future and, and what you're thinking about in terms of our children's continued progress and growth. And that's what it's all about. And so congratulations and look forward to all of the successes in the future.
And now, now the vote. I'm going to hold it till after we vote.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Dr. Crawford, I, I'm sure you may want to step up and say a couple of words, but I, I think I speak on behalf of, of the board. I hope I do. You know, we're excited. We are happy. It is so good to have one of our very own ascend to this very important role. No-brainer. Welcome. We are here to support you. We already know you're going to be a success. And, you know.
I have a lot to say, but still no words. I'm reminded about a book that talks about to whom much is given, much is required. So I appreciate this opportunity. The love in the room is overwhelming from everywhere. I am delighted to serve. I've grown a lot in this district. And I said to Dr. Rick and Dr. Hand today that my life has been changed because of the city of White Plains. Beyond my career, I have an amazing team that's supporting me. And we have one goal. And I recognize, and I'm wise enough to know, that I cannot reach the goal alone. But I can promise you one thing, that I'm going to give this district my absolute best. I am honored to work alongside of each of you. I am thrilled about this opportunity. But moreover, we're working for one purpose and that's our children.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Can I take a moment? So, it was, it was a number of years ago that we first met Dr. Crawford, when we interviewed her when she came in, and she walked into the room, and I fell in love with her. And, you know, she's taken this journey, and I've dropped into wherever she's been, and we've talked, and we've chatted, and the warmth that she brings, and the caring that she brings, and just the genuine heart and intelligence, and she's an amazing speaker, and just so happy that this happened. It's awesome.
Well deserved, well deserved. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Welcome to stay, but this is celebration to start.
Make sure everybody's on time tomorrow. Be careful.
Next, we're going to public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. Please respect the privacy of, of, of any students or faculty and our administrators. Our superintendent and assistant suits would be happy to speak or to you on a, you know, personally on a more private matter. Do we have any pub, public participation? If we do, please step to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello? My name's Alan Weintraub, 11-year-old farm circle, White Plains, New York. I got a, a comment, uh, talking about people being inducted into the White Plains Hall of Fame. 30 seconds, so. When I was, uh, co-captain of the White Plains basketball team in 1960, 61, um, myself and senior, two juniors, the fifth spot was rotated, you know, depending on who the adversary was. We, uh, the gym wasn't finished, we had to practice at the North Street School. We suffered a couple of terrible defeats. We went up to Linton of Schenectady, Pat Riley. We lost in the, at the, at a 51-game winning streak, and we lost at the buzzer. It was the only game I've ever cried. We came back and, uh, we wound up, at the end of the season, Norm Fullerton was the coach, Harry Jefferson was the JV coach. I was a senior, and you never paid any attention to the freshmen or sophomores. Two years was tremendous difference. At the end of the season, Norm Fullerton brought up one of the sophomores. The moment he stepped on the court with me, I knew he was playing a different game. He started a few games with us, got knocked unconscious in the county center. We played a rough form of basketball. His name was Mal Graham. Anybody know who Mal Graham is?
No.
I have box scores where I'm scoring in double figures and he's scoring in zero, and over the years, I maintained contact with him. He went on to be NYU's, when NYU was a top basketball team, All-American. How good was he? In 1967, he was drafted number one by the Boston Celtics. Now, if you know a little bit of history, that alone, unfortunately, he played a few years, suffered a glandular disease, went on to law school and became a judge up in Boston. So that was my, my Hall of Fame player, even though I had played a few games with him. The moment he stepped on the court, I knew it was a different game. So I feel like a little bit of a Grinch at listening to what's going on in White Plains, but as most of you know, um, and I'm going to thank Dr. Richter and Dr. Hand, President Eller, and the members of the board for listening to me once again. So this is about full-time pre-K, right? You've heard from me before. So this is my understanding where we're at. According to Dr. Richter and Dr. Hand, uh, in, in this year, 375 students were placed in pre-K, right? And there was no waiting list, am I correct?
I believe the number is 321.
Oh, 321, right, but, but the key was there was no waiting list. So that, that seems to me to be an accomplishment. However, I'm looking, I'm going to project, I'm, I'm, we're looking for the next year, right? Starting in 2023 to 2024. So my first, my first question is, I know there's a consulting or company that is supposed to produce a report, right? Am I correct for pre-K, amongst other things? That, that as yet, we haven't gotten that report yet. So that's one thing that, and I know Dr. Richter and Dr. Hand will send it to me, I assume it's public knowledge, to review that, to make sure that the, there's an opportunity for us to fund, continue to fund pre-K for every child who wants it, starting in 2023. However, I, one of these people, I do look at the website, and the website still has the caveat that there's going to be a lottery system in 2023. Maybe that's a leftover from the last thing, so my first question is, I'm looking forward to getting the consulting report, and I'm also looking forward to eliminate, the Board of Education eliminating that caveat. And also, I noticed that you indicated that in the last newsletter, that every child had been accepted. So the, the school district is already publicizing the fact that apparently, if a parent, uh, just like in kindergarten, or there'll be seats available for everybody, hopefully in So that, those are the two things I'm looking forward to, one, getting the consulting report, and one, seeing that caveat eliminated on, on the board's website. At my age, you have obligations to other people who are no longer here. So one of the things that has, um, in, in some of the other work that I've done, I trust all of you are familiar with the Alice Report. And you're also familiar with a report from the, it's a terrible, um, title, but it's "The City of White Plains, New York, 2020.2024: Analysis of Impediment to Fair Housing Choice." This is a report produced by the city. It's about 64-page report, it's some hell of a report. And in the report, the city, planning commissioner, but the city recognizes that 42% of the households in White Plains are Alice households, meaning they can't meet their basic costs of living. And the Alice Report is some remarkable report, produced by the United Way. It breaks it down by zip code, forgetting municipalities, zip code. So you could see whatever zip code in White Plains, or in Scarsdale, or Mamaroneck, throughout the county, with the number of households that cannot meet their basic costs of living. So when I look at this, and this is the, and Dr. Richter and Dr. Hand have, have seen my comments on this, so hopefully, in 2023, we can provide pre-K for all the eligible students coming in. And then perhaps we should take a look at the next steps, right? Because we're not satisfied. And I have two suggestions. One, bus transportation. So why is he talking about bus transportation? These were the obligations come in. My parents moved here in 1959, okay? So let's take 1960. The population of the city of White Plains is 50,000 people. Imagine, the population now is only 60,000. 60 years, it's only increased by 10,000 people. The households were roughly 18,000 as opposed to 21,000. And my mother, uh, there were four of us, so she was not a working mother, right? Quote-unquote. She was only raising four children, right? And I've just thought, um, about the households in 1960 as compared to the households in And what I'm talking about is, I, I assume you have the census of the households. Single-parent households, working husbands and wives, or partners working. It's hard for me to remember, I remember a couple of my friends and peers who didn't have a two-family, what was then a traditional household. So the second step is extending the pre-K day beyond, and it's in the website. You have it on the website that there's an opportunity to, to extend that pre-K day, but it's an additional cost depending on the, um, the sponsorship where it's being held, correct?
There are partnerships, right?
Yeah. It's not in every, I happened to open the polls at Rochambeau when I was talking to the head janitor, a very interesting guy, and we were, he was telling me about how Rochambeau functions with a, a pre-K and high school, is that how Rochambeau functions? Very interesting. So those are the other two steps, and what I, I'm hoping to do, and I, I just want to be involved in the budget process, I also want you to know that, um, and this is, I've given a lot of this information to our three state legislators, Amy Poland, Chris Burdick, and Shelley Mayer. And Shelley, of course, is the head of the Education Commission in the state. And I've had pleasant conversations, talking to them about trying to, and they have different words than they, I, I am a lawyer and every, I, I do talk about magic words, but the state government has its own magic words, which I am not familiar with. And I've talked to them about, they're going to have to explain to me the magic words so that we can help get the city more funding, because it seems to me that this city has an opportunity to really shine in this area, given the community that we saw today, and the, the community, uh, uh, we've lived here for 45 years, uh, and so I, I just want you to know that. So that, that is, I, I will, Dr. Richter is already waving the white flag to me, but I will continue this, I will continue discussing this, and I just want to be a part of the budget process to help the, the district achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Weintraub, we, and I just want to say, and I, I know Dr. Hand would echo, really do appreciate the, the back and forth and the conversation about planning for the future. I'm looking forward to continuing that. I had no idea you were co-captain of the basketball team.
I can show you the cartoon, we won the section one championships, there was no state championship at that time. We beat a team called Mount Vernon.
I've heard, I've heard they.
That you were down.
Might be the last time they lost.
We were down 14 points with four minutes to go in the county center, we scored 21 points and beat them.
Is it on the wall? We'll get a look on the wall now. Get a look on the wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take a vote on summary?
Yes, ma'am.
And, Jessica, we have updated that language for the next, the preparing application that was language from.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the lottery is also a part of us having multiple sites and multiple providers, so our parents get to select first, second, third choice at those sites, so that is also a part of the lottery.
Right.
So it doesn't mean that you're necessarily not going to get a seat, but as soon as I had that explanation, I went back to Jen McCann and said, "Let's update this."
To clarify that, right, right. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's Jaden Karam, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, so next, we're going to move to summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Yes, thank you, Madam President. I draw your attention to subject or item 4B, um, and would like to thank our generous donors, $5,000 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools to fund the 2223 District-Wide School Year Parent University Program, which you heard spoken about this evening. Yep. $500 from Ms. Donna Joseph towards a White Plains High School student to receive a scholarship, and music books and sheet music donation from retired White Plains music teacher, Bill Muro. Thank you very much for all of those donations.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to go to individual act, um, action items. We have the recommended, um, action to approve and ratify the terms of the memorandum of agreement and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute a collective bargaining agreement effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
No.
All?
Just like to, um, thank our colleagues, uh, at the negotiations table, like to thank the Board of Education. This was a very collegial process, which yielded a strong and sustainable six, has that for alliteration, successor agreement. And this is great, and this is what we all wanted to see. We wanted to make sure that we are an, continue to be an attractive employer that will retain the highest quality personnel to be able to serve our kids.
Thank you. And, uh, Michelle, just a heads up, I'm going to ask for the vote, but I will abstain.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I just didn't want to.
Listen for yes or no.
I just want, I just wanted to give that, that heads up. Uh, and next, we have, um, uh, a memorandum, um, of agreement that the White, the, the Board of Education of the White Plains City School District hereby approves the memorandum of agreement among the district, the White Plains Teachers Association and Employees Number 1484 dated November 14th, 2022. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions on that? All in favor?
So moved.
Second. No.
All.
Just like to thank our colleagues at the negotiations table. Like to thank the Board of Education. This was a very collegial process, which yielded a strong and sustainable, has that for alliteration, successor agreement. And this is great. And this is what we all wanted to see. We wanted to make sure that we are, continue to be an attractive employer that will retain the highest-quality personnel to be able to serve our kids.
Thank you. And Michelle, just a heads up, I'm going to ask for the vote, but I will abstain. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I just didn't want to.
Yes or no?
I just wanted to give that heads up. And next, we have a memorandum of agreement that the Board of Education of the White Plains City School District hereby approves the memorandum of agreement among the district, the White Plains Teachers Association and Employees Number 1484, dated November 14th, 2022. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we've done 9C. I think they finally.
They're still.
The door's closed. We can't go anywhere.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the 2021-2023 Professional Development Plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, the resolved that the Board of Education of the White Plains City School District approves the out-of-state field trip for the White Plains varsity baseball team to attend the IMG Academy Baseball Tournament located in Bradenton, Florida from April 2nd, 2023 through April 6th, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Do they need a chef now?
Right.
I think they need a travel deputy.
They did.
Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jealousy.
Next, we have the resolved that the Board of Education of the White Plains City School District approves the out-of-state field trip for the Post Road Elementary Fifth Grade Class to attend Nature's Classroom located in Lakeside, Connecticut from May 10th, 2023 to May 12th, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Don't we all remember those trips for our kids?
My daughter still speaks of them.
Yes, yes, yes. Any questions?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, my gosh, Nature's Classroom. Yay.
I have one question. Is there any chance to move that to some of the other schools? Because I know I have to mention that kids who were, you know, when we talk about equity in terms of our grammar schools, there were kids at the other schools who really felt that they were left out and did not get to go to Nature's Classroom. And many years down the pipe, they still talk about it.
That's Anthony Russo.
Just to mention that.
But there was a real moving force at Post Road.
Yeah. But I'd like to see that moving force at the other schools as well. It's a particular.
And I also do want to thank also the PTA for the support of that. As you know, that's a very expensive. And the Post Road PTA does a lot of work. It's a big endeavor, so thank you. But yeah, Doc, you're right.
It's a big commitment.
Next, we'll move to item 10, where we'll have our board discussions. I know that we had our finance committee meeting. We talked about stuff in the long-range plan. And what else, what else did we talk about, Randy? It's okay.
Thought it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, there was a lot of talk about the investment advisors.
And the long-range plan, I will say, you know, it's really critical to the functioning of our district. And I'm really happy to be on the finance committee, you know, to talk about that. Because in my job as well, you know, you have to have a plan for a district to run well, right? So to hear this and to be part of it, it's really rewarding for me, but the importance is not lost on that.
It's important in terms of investment planning that we, as a district, are very limited in the ways we can invest in terms of the safety of investments. And there are so many rules about it. So we, besides having to pick an investment planner, you have to teach them, to some degree, what is involved in the school business world as opposed to the regular business world. It's different.
Yeah, and our money, we want our monies to work for us. We want to get the, we want to get more than, you know, what it's really worth to get our students everything that they need and want to be successful. So, you know, that's great work and great discussion. I look forward to that. We had a wellness, oh, any other board committee report?
We had the quarterly safety team meeting, where we talked about advanced lockdown procedures. We talked about parents reunification. We talked about CPR. We talked about the Stop the Bleed cabinets, which I think are incredibly important. And we also talked about the new rules for lead testing that are going on. They're more stringent than they were in the past, and that, from my point of view, is a wonderful thing, a pain in the neck for facilities, but it is nonetheless a wonderful thing, and we are being involved in that as well.
And Frank, a few years ago, didn't we update a lot of the water fountains and clothes?
We did, but the rules changed. They're much stricter now. They're stricter than they were before. Much stricter.
They went from 13 parts per billion to five.
Which, in terms of children's brains, is really important.
Dr. Stein, I think fair. I just wanted, Dr. Stein, I just wanted to, to your point about safety, we, this was, I think, probably the first time. We, as an entire administrative team, met, of course, with Jake Harrison and our liaison from Altaris, and went through, really, a, not quite a tabletop, but we did walk through our reunification procedures last Tuesday, onsite, in person, and then kind of through the protocol, which was very beneficial, and it allowed us also to talk through some areas that we wanted to kind of flesh out a little bit more.
I'm very impressed with this particular group in terms of other safety programs I've gone through as part of other organizations. This is so far and above beyond them. They really do a great job.
Thank you.
Does it include, like, I know, like, hardening our schools and that aspect, and tabletop training, but does it include, like, identifying students and providing mental health service? Is it, like, balanced in terms of the approach?
After an event, do you mean, or?
Pre-event, so we're looking at the mass shooting that occurred, right? This afternoon, just identifying students that may be at risk, or just a concern?
So we don't, yeah, that's a great question. And just so the board is aware, we, in terms of threat assessments and identi, I know, identifica, sorry, center. Identification of any potential threats. We have a protocol that is an in-house, employee-based, and employee-centered. So that's not part of really sort of public consumption in terms of threat assessment, and certainly a parent or guardian who was involved will be part of that, White Plains Police Department, as well as community agencies to provide additional support, so like St., you know, St. Fitz. And then, the safety committee is really looking more at our building-level safety plans, our district-level safety plans, and all of the intricacies that are involved in that, in addition to wellness and other aspects. But in terms of providing supports, and like, for instance, red flag laws are one of the things that you hear sometimes talked about, right? Providing assistance and support to families when there might be some concern related to potential weapons or things of that nature. All of those laws, they apply to all public school districts in the state of New York, and, yes, we have training on that side too. Sorry. Thank you.
The, I also went to the Youth Bureau, the Youth Bureau Board meeting, and I do try to go to those, you know, but typically conflicts with HR meeting, which we had, and we really can't discuss, you know, those matters. But I did have opportunity to go, and one of the programs that was highlighted was Black Men in White Coats program. And I highlight that because it was very, very, very successful. And, you know, I was contacted because my son, as a product of White Plains, is a physician, and unfortunately, he was on call and he could not attend. But I have volunteered in his stead to sit on panels, because I find a lot of these panels, I'm getting asked for more of these panels, how do you groom someone in the sciences, and how you ensure that their desire to be in the medical field, to be a physician, is nourished? You know, how do you get them there? And what do you do as a parent to move your child along that continuum? Which I think is very important. So I volunteered in his stead, but I'm just hoping that he has a better schedule next time so he can go himself.
Don't count it. I know what year he is.
But, you know, it's really great, and it's our kids. It's all of our kids in White Plains. So, you know, everything is interconnected, so I was happy, I was happy for that. I'm going to move down to, is there a curriculum?
Yes, curriculum.
Are you going to curriculum?
Yeah, we, it was a data presentation on 3 through 12 regions, exam results, state test scores in ELA in math. I think we're going to get a presentation or something.
We also, if I can talk about a really exciting initiative that we are undertaking in the White Plains schools. And I'm not going to do it justice. I tried to sort of write down some of the highlights. We have a partnership with an organization called Common Circles.
Yes.
Right? Moving to understand ourselves and others. And it's really going to come to full bloom, I guess, in the spring. So identity is a real important aspect of this, and we are going to be working with this organization. There's going to be like a school-wide, in the middle schools and the high school, initiative on identity, understanding our own identities as a way of facilitating learning about others. So really exciting. In addition, this organization has partnered with the University of Southern California, USC's Shoah Foundation. Shoah is the Holocaust. And they have done amazing work. They have developed, there was, it was on 60 Minutes at some point, they have developed holograms of liberators and victims, and through artificial intelligence.
I did see that.
So you can actually ask questions, get responses. It's interactive. Our students are going to be able to experience that. We are going to have these pop-up exhibits, pop-up museums, in our schools. So there's this whole context of identity and genocide and the Holocaust. You know, and Jesse Osorio was talking about community and connections, and these are the kinds of things that our students need to be learning about as they grow older and as they mature. It's going to be interdisciplinary. There's English, there's social studies, and there's computer science because of all the technology that's involved in. So we've actually had interactions with USC, who developed the platform. I mean, it's really going to be an incredible experience.
We haven't had that. Yeah.
Right? And it's like, we're the first ones doing this, like, in the whole country. They have partnered with White Plains.
Yeah.
So it's really going to be incredible.
We have to dress in.
Four different outfits.
Four different outfits.
I don't know. I always see you like this. I always see you.
We're the same thing every day.
So I don't know if I've done it.
It's going to be great.
So it's a lot of different dimensions that you have for identity, right?
Right.
Because we are who we are in different situations. Like, you were probably very different at the Notre Dame baby game.
No, no, no.
That's right.
You did. You captured that.
You did. Very good job.
That's good.
It's really exciting.
Yes, that's exciting.
There will be more. We're going to hopefully open it to.
And it's good that we also had some experience with that. Just happened to see, happened to see that on 60 Minutes. Yeah, and I looked at that, and I was like, it was very in-depth. So, yeah, that complimented with that.
And the public will be invited. I mean, there's going to be a lot of community outreach, so it's really fabulous. And the only other thing I'll mention is special ed. Jesse Osorio did the whole presentation. Because Jesse came to the special ed subcommittee and spoke about community circles. So I was going to say something about them, but she already has. And then, we also learned about the professional development that was going to take place on the superintendent's conference day, you know, the science of reading, and applied behavioral analysis, and youth and teen mental health.
Thank you. And just briefly, we've been having the wellness committee meetings. You know, we're going to, you know, we've been talking a lot about what the students have to eat, how it's presented, and just how to overall make it more appealing so that it's not looked, you know, having to eat in school or get food in school is not looked at as something to be ashamed of, but it's really good food, and it's nourishing, and that you should take advantage of it, and how our students can take advantage of it. And we went through examples, like athletes, and I can relate to that. You know, after you work out, you're tired, you want something to eat, and you still have to go home and do your homework. How wonderful would it be to have a grab-and-go? You're eating on your way home, on the drive, and when you get home, like, you can start working and not coming home hungry, have to eat, and then start your work. Just really making it a really robust and attractive food-wise program. And we're supposed to have a demo of the food.
And nutritious, and tasty.
Nutritious, tasty, and it looks appealing, and it's an environmental, and it's in an environmental carton as well. So we're looking at all of those, because we're all into the environment and recycling, and good food, and just making our students happy and nourished.
Your committee gets a trip. You're on a trip.
Well, she's going to bring the food. She's going to bring the food to us.
I know. I saw samples, right?
Yeah. You want to come? Okay. Not, not, yes.
I know. Can you open it to the board? Let's have a look.
Yeah, we'll arrange, and I'll arrange something. And the other thing is.
Lacus.
Yo, that's healthy.
Lacus.
Healthy little sour cream, you're good.
The other, the other thing is, there are a gazillion meetings on the high school building addition planning committee. I can tell you, you know, it's very fortunate to have a laptop, and even if I'm in the city or if I'm working from home, that I can dial in. Those are pretty prescribed. They're not that long, but that you can get in and get a look and provide some comments. Sometimes I think I talk too much, but I, you know, I think. I think in the, in the community, and when people talk about what they would want to see, and they say things, I feel like it's something that I want to communicate to the committee and what I see as well as a businessperson. Because we're in the business of preparing our kids for careers, as you would say, that don't even exist. So when I see something like cyber, not cyber, security, what is that? Internet, cybersecurity. When we're preparing for a course on cybersecurity, and though, that is a job. It is a thing, and it's a very lucrative job. And you look at a space for it, and the question can be, is it going to be able to accommodate the students that I know are going to be very interested in that career? We have to be forward-thinking like that. And I think when we combine our business acumen with what we see in the real world, and how we want to prepare our students, I think it's a great connection to help, you know, grow our programs and spaces needed for those. So a lot of meetings there, a lot of discussion, and it goes on. And the finance committee, we spoke about.
Everything today, we did with the finance.
Yeah. Anything, anything else? Anything else? Happy, happy.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. And before we adjourn, John, thank you, thank you, thank you, as usual. Thank you. And for the finance report and all the work with the audit, thank you, Frank, for everything with facilities. Thank you to our public comments. Thank you, Scott. Dad, Dad, thank you. Thank you, Post Road. I have to talk to you about the food. Anne Ridgeway, I have to talk to you about the food pantry one minute, because I have volunteers. Thank you to our PTA council, because you're ahead above everybody else, and thank you. And, you know, Post Road, everyone, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.